All right. I called to order the Lake Mills City Council for May 5th, 2020.
Recording is on.
Can we get the roll call, please?
Mr. Fields?
He's got a really red box there.
Steve.
Roll call, Steve.
Here.
Diane?
Here, here.
Yes.
Mr. Foster?
Here.
Mr. Fritsch?
Here.
Ms. Schmidt?
Here.
Here.
So, let me ask if you're not speaking, please put your microphone on mute. Okay. Do we get everybody? Okay. Item three, Pledge of Allegiance. For those that can stand, please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands.
And to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, liberty and justice for all.
Perfect. Okay, moving on to item four, correction and/or approval of the City Council's special meeting of April 13th, 2020, and the regular City Council minutes of April 21st, 2020. Just one note before we make a motion. Misty Quest sent out a update to them. There was a couple errors, and they are correct on Granicus now. So, if you haven't had a chance to look at the Granicus, the changes were... Ah, got the wrong email. On April 13th, 2020, there were some, the words "was absent", they were removed. And on April 21st, for ordinance 1213, she inadvertently typed Mrs. Fritsch instead of Ms. Schmidt for voting no. So, those were corrected. So, I would entertain a motion of adoption for these two sets of minutes as they are written in Granicus.
I will move the passage of the minutes.
All right.
For dates.
Second. Okay, we got a motion and a second to pass both sets of minutes. Can we call the vote?
Diane?
Hi.
Mr. Foster?
Aye.
Mr. Fritsch?
Aye.
Ms. Schmidt?
Aye.
Mr. Fields?
Steve?
Aye.
Perfect.
Motion passed five zero.
Thank you. All right, that moves us on to correspondence. Does anybody want to start with anything?
Well, I'll ask her. Do I need to put my mic up? Okay. Well, I just will mention that I received several phone calls, and I also received some emails. Some pro and some con. The, um, the topic regarding Tyranina Park. It is my understanding that the Parks Board is going to be looking into this issue. So, all I want to say is that I did receive the correspondence.
All right, thank you, Diane. Does anybody else have anything?
I received the same correspondence.
Okay, so I got that concurrence from both Vicki and from Steve. Do you have anything?
I did too.
Okay.
I also had some correspondence with Scott over in the trailer park and with Tim also, and talked to them a little bit about... They were just trying to get an idea of what our future plans are with Sandy Beach, so I just shared what we have on our website with them and talked to them for a little while.
Okay. So, I received the same emails on the park, and I do know that you guys are going to be talking about that coming up here in your next meeting. I also received a email, somebody asking about changing pickup of, of recycles to more than once every other week. So, I've asked the staff to just get a little bit of information on what it would cost for us, and we'll decide if we need to go any further on it at, whenever we get that information, we'll decide whether or not we need to go any further on it. I'm not so sure that we need four pickups a month on recycles, but I could be totally wrong. All right, is there anything else?
Yes. I was in a case with the county health department, concerns over COVID-19. And essentially, from the spokesperson for the department, they told me that the response has been basically reaction in accordance to the directives from the State Department of Health and, um, and also from the CDC on the federal level. And that I was concerned about testing whether it would be available on a less rationed basis and more in a general population to do things. And they said at this present time, it's, it's going to be restricted, it's going to be rationed like it is now. You have to have a doctor send you, or you've got to go to the emergency room or go to the hospital in order to get it, to get tested for it. They are also looking for tracking individuals who have come into contact with it. And I was surprised at how many, um, group homes, respite, I should say, nursing homes, assisted living homes we have in the county that need to be taken care of. So, um, it was, as they said, the situation is changing daily, and right now, as far as testing goes, it will be rationed.
All right, thanks for that, and that's something I've noticed firsthand. My son works for Walmart, and they keep sending him away from work, but they won't test him at any of the hospitals. So, I'm not sure what's going on.
Doctors, he's got to have doctors order, son.
Right, yeah, and he actually went through his doctor, and his doctor wouldn't, wouldn't order it, but they made him stay home from work anyway. So, anyway, um, thank you for that. Anybody else?
Can I just ask?
Yeah.
Um, Mr. Fritsch, do you remember the number of nursing homes you found out we had?
I remember a hundred, about 142.
Nursing homes?
Nursing homes, assisted living, group homes.
Okay.
Um, especially because we've got institutions in the county that have group homes.
Yeah. Okay, thank you. We will move, yeah, go ahead.
Oh, one thing I wanted to add, nobody has died yet in the county.
Well, that's good news.
Yes.
All right, we're going to move on to item six. Questions and public comment. The public is encouraged to address the council at this time regarding items on the agenda. Public comments may also be made at this time on items that are not on the agenda if you have registered with the city clerk before the meeting has been called to order. The state's open meeting law discourages action by the council on items not listed on the agenda. Please keep your comments limited to three minutes and state your name and address before you start, and if you're here in the audience, please sign the sheet at the podium. I don't think we have anybody in the audience that said they were going to speak here. Is there anybody online that has public comments? Hearing nothing, we will close the questions and public comment, and we will move on to the city manager's report, item seven. Steve?
Uh, Steve, we're having trouble hearing you.
We don't, we don't hear your mics off. He's going to town.
I provided you with several documents, and, uh, South Main Street, they have got all the underground done, and they have just about completed the base. They should have it done this week, and they will start pouring the northbound lane probably next week. The tree planting that we have is done for the spring. We'll probably finish the rest of the tree planting on South Main Street in the fall, because most of that will be done where they're working right now. Mulberry Street, there was a big meeting today with the contractor and the state and city employees to discuss getting the punch list items done on Mulberry. So, hopefully, next week, they will start on that. We have a camera at the yardway site, and we have been monitoring that, and we've been using that for data purposes to start accumulating data for what we're looking at when our, um, as we continue to develop the yardway site proposal. On the Sandy Beach, we're still on the same timeline. We're holding off on the Phase Three because all the, all the, um, Native American Historic Preservation Offices are closed due to COVID, so we can't get them to sign off on the MOA. So, until that's done, we have to hold off on the Phase Three. I did receive both documents for the Fish and Wildlife and the recreational boating grants. They'll be on your next agenda to be signed, to be approved and authorized to be signed. They're conditional on the MOA, too. The demolition of the Sandy Beach Restaurant is probably going to start progressing either later this week or the beginning of next week. The gas line has been disconnected. Food truck RFPs will be before you at your next council meeting, probably have at least two, maybe three proposals. Triathlon is moved, was scheduled for June 7th, it's now going to be August 23rd. Radium, we got all our tests back on the radium, we're back within the required numbers, so we'll probably be seeing that consent order withdrawn in the next month or two. We did get the consent order for the lead requirements. I sent that out to you, that was removed. Corrosion control, we got a new report today that says the orthophosphate is probably the route to go, and we'll probably make a new proposal to the DNR here in the next 30 days on, um, lead control through corrosion. The water rate is still on hold until the end of July. Cross connections, we're sending out new letters to get people to comply with cross connection requirements. We completed a wastewater treatment plant facilities report and have submitted that to the DNR. That's a requirement of our permit, and it kind of outlines how we plan on meeting the next set of EPA requirements for phosphorus and nitrogen and several of the other requirements that we have to deal with. The electric billing audit, we've submitted all the documents, got some new requests, completed those, now we're just waiting on that. Riverwood, which is Paul Juisty, we sent him his special assessment for that 11 acres on the south side of, uh, American Way. I haven't heard back from him yet, but Betsy sent the notice that he would be put on payment starting this fall. Tyranine Point, Grandma Subdivision, we're still moving forward. Dan's just about got the developers agreement and the TID agreement completed. The right-of-way acquisition is just waiting for a final from an attorney. The bids were accepted and the contracts are in place, and they're not signed yet, but we're getting ready to start looking at completing that. 1204 is on the agenda tonight. I got all the paperwork completed for the annexation of the right-of-ways along County Highway V and County Highway B, and we're just waiting for the check to submit those to the state, and then they'll be on your agenda. Next council meeting, we will have a board of review meeting before. So, from 5:00 to 7:00, they'll have a board of review. If they need to, they'll adjourn their meeting to another date so that, but we might have a little bit of conflict between the two meetings at some point. We've been working with the county, they plan on continuing to follow the standard property tax processes that they normally do, so they will be sending us our distribution as they normally do. Are there any questions on any of that?
Yeah, the only thing I saw in there that I don't think you mentioned, you had something called small wireless.
Yeah, that's a, that's one of those items where these companies are coming in and establishing these small wireless towers in our right-of-ways. And basically, the state has given them the right to do that. And so, MEUW has been working with, um, boardmen and associates to develop an ordinance on how to try and manage that. And those, Dan's got those proposals, and he'll probably start bringing them out in a month or two as we kind of get through some of this other stuff. It was one of those one that's on the back agenda, but to let you know that that's an item that's coming up, and we'll probably see a lot more of it in the near future.
Is that part of the rural wireless initiative?
It's, yeah.
Yeah, okay. Take my interest, so does anybody have any questions for Steve on the items that he has covered or anything that you would like to ask him at this time? Okay, hearing nothing. I only had one last thing that I wanted to touch, Steve. Could, could somebody get in touch with the company that has the wireless tower out by the water tower and find out what we're going to do? When they're going to move that thing? It's kind of a, kind of an eyesore out there, with a nice new painted water tower.
Yeah, they're, they are planning to move that. We have been in conversations with them. That's, uh, the wireless, one of the wireless, um,
Right.
web, um, internet providers.
Yep.
But yes, we'll try and get them to finalize that. They haven't been particularly aggressive in getting that moved. They keep telling us they will.
Yeah, they would probably, they're, they're, uh, people that they service would probably get better service if they get that up on top of the water tower than right beside it, so.
Agreed.
That's all I had. One more time, anybody have anything else for Steve? All right, thanks, Steve. We're going to move on to item eight. Acceptance of the minutes of the Library Board of February 17th, 2020. The Plan Commission of February 25th, 2020, and the Plan Commission of April 13th, 2020. And those will go on the record as, as written. All right, that takes us into council business. And the first thing on item nine A is board and committee appointments. And the first thing I want to talk about is the council member appointments. And my plan right now is to leave everybody on the commissions that they're on unless somebody has a big concern that they would like to move to something else. So, what I'd like is a motion to confirm that everybody is going to be placed on the same commissions or boards that they are currently post, uh, as part of.
So move.
All right, we got a motion?
Second.
And a second. All right, let's call the roll, please.
Mr. Foster?
Aye.
Mr. Fritsch?
Aye.
Ms. Schmidt?
Aye.
Mr. Fields?
Aye.
Diane?
Hi.
Motion passed five zero.
Thank you. The next seven of them, I believe it's here, yep. The next seven are all appointments that we're making to the different commissions, and I'm going to put them all in as one consent agenda. And I would like Misty to read the different commissions and the different members that are going to be placed on these commissions and boards at this time.
Plan Commission, Pamela Lazarus, Greg Coots. Public Works Board, Todd Temperley, Bennett Ruplinger. Parks Board, William Logathetus and Matthew Peterson. Library Board, Robin Unz. Zoning Board of Appeals, Thomas Whitting. Economic Development Commission, Wayne Magnuson and Myrna Keen. Extraterritorial Zoning Committee, Greg Coots. And that's all of them.
I will entertain a motion to approve these appointments.
So move, so move.
And a second?
Second.
Second from Steve. All right, before we go into the vote, I just want to say a couple of words. I want to truly thank the folks that are re-upping on their commitment to help us on these commissions and boards. It takes a lot of time and a lot of effort to run the city and all this stuff that goes on. And giving of your time selflessly like that is a big undertaking, we all understand. You probably have better things to do, and we really truly appreciate everything that you have done in the past and will do for us again. Now, for the new folks, Bennett Ruplinger, Matthew Peterson, Thomas Whitting. Thank you for stepping forward and granting us some of your time to help us make sure that we're doing the right things in the city. Without these boards and commissions, the City Council could potentially be blind because there are just not enough hours in a day for us to do our regular work and focus on all this stuff. So, I just want to say thank you from all of us here in the City Council, and with that being said, let's call the vote, please.
Before we do that, I'd also like to thank the people who have served in the past, who have decided not to run again or did not want to be on the committee again, some of them have been on for years. And just like Mike said, your work has also been very much appreciated, and thank you for having me done that.
Yep, and that was oversight of my part, sorry about that, and thank you all. Let's call the vote, please.
Mr. Fritsch?
Aye.
Ms. Schmidt?
Aye.
Mr. Fields?
Aye.
Diane?
Hi.
Mr. Foster?
Aye.
Motion passed five zero.
Thank you, welcome, everybody.
Thank you.
All right. Item nine B, City Manager Appointments. It looks like Mr. Wilkie is appointing Gerald Osterich to the Housing Authority and Adam Smith to the Police and Fire Commission. And I don't think there's anything we have to do there, right, Steve? Those are just your appointments?
Right, they're my appointments, there's no motion or activity needed other than to put them on the agenda for you to know.
Perfect. Well, thanks, thanks for those, gentlemen.
These are both reappointments.
Reappointments, okay, great.
Yep, yeah, Adam is actually the chairman of the Police and Fire Commission at this time, and Diane's on the Housing Authority with Mr. Osterich.
And Jerry is the chairman of the Housing Authority as well.
Perfect. Well, thank you, gentlemen, and I knew Adam, I think I met him at the, our, uh, police, whatever it was we were starting up that got halted by the COVID-19.
Police Academy.
Police Academy. Moves us on to item C, miscellaneous licenses. Could you read that name for us, please, Misty?
We've got one tavern operator's license for Kimberly Campo.
All right, I would entertain a motion of adoption for this person.
So move.
Diane got it first, Steve, would you like to second it?
Sure, second.
Okay. Let's call the vote when you're ready.
Ms. Schmidt?
Aye.
Mr. Fields?
Aye.
Diane?
Hi.
Mr. Foster?
Aye.
Mr. Fritsch?
Aye.
Motion passed five zero.
I'm so used to sitting over here, every time you say Ms. Schmidt, I look that way because she's always my right. She's not there tonight. All right, that moves us on to item 90, discussion decision on methodology of sale for 1117 South Main Street and 1204 South Main Street. Is there a motion titled to be read on there?
Yes. Would you like me to read the title? City Council Motion 20-5-1-1, authorizing the city manager to proceed with the advertising of a notice of intent to sell surplus city real estate.
Okay, I would entertain a, a motion. A motion of adoption.
So move.
Okay. We have a motion of adoption on motion 20-5-1-1. Do we have a second?
Second.
Okay, so what should we know about this that hasn't been stated already, Steve? I'm assuming this is yours?
Yes, it's mine. The, um, we actually accumulated the real estate to resell it to try and upgrade the south entrance to the city, which has been a goal of TID number five for, since 2014. So, several of those parcels are, have been up for sale. A lot of it has revolved around the reconstruction of South Main Street. We have received an offer from an interested party. And, um, so we think it's time that we probably look at moving this real estate. So, I wrote in the memo that there are a couple of different ways of doing it. I suggested option one. It, um, requires us to advertise it a couple of times in the newspaper, put some for-sale signs on the property, and then, um, accept offers on it, and then review them and bring them back to the council. I know that there's some interest in just having them brought back to the council for their review, which is fine with me, I have no... uh, which is fine with me. I have no, uh, pride in this. I, again, stole this from another city. So uh, whatever you guys decide, but, uh, I think it's time that we've looked at moving that real estate and getting it ready to be reconstructed.
So are, are we required to notice all this again for sale? We had it out there once, right?
We have different options. It just depends on how you're going to move forward with it. Previously, it was listed with the real estate agent. At least one, 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 seven was. Um, that listing contract is, is done. It's been done for a couple of years. Um, twelve oh four has never been listed before, so we received kind of a, um, an unrequested offer. There's been plenty of discussion and negotiation, but, uh, we've received an offer on it, so that's kinda spurring this. What I, what I worry about, Mike, is transparency.
Right, exactly.
If you don't at least advertise it once and put some signs on it, people, you're gonna receive criticism from other people saying, hey, we, we never had an opportunity. It was a inside deal. You sold it. And so I wanna make sure that we at least have some, some fallback to say, hey, we advertised that we put for sale signs up on it. If you wanted to contact us, you were more than welcome. Um, I mean, we still have to go through a little bit of a process. We're probably gonna have to finalize the, um, appraisals of the property. Uh, there are probably some CSMs that have to be completed. Uh, during it, I have been working on the lot eleven seventeen. It's much larger than I originally anticipated. Um, a large portion of the town hall parking lot is on our lot. Um, so we have to kinda clean that up. Uh, I've been talking to Hope. Um, she wanted, the driveway is currently about almost thirty feet. Uh, originally, we're looking at making it twenty-four. Come to find out that the property line wasn't where we anticipated it was. Um, so now we, we're discussing with her, we came back and said the biggest you can have that driveway is fourteen feet. Uh, technically, if they move it a couple of feet north, they could have sixteen feet. Uh, I guess that's probably something that they would have to look at. Um, I did ask her if she was willing to buy an easement on the property, but I really don't wanna encumber the property if we have it up for sale.
Right.
Um, so, um, but that, that was my reasoning. I, I wanna be as transparent as possible. I don't wanna take a bunch of criticism that I gave someone a special deal.
Oh, that makes sense. And that's, uh, the reason why I asked that question, just to find out what, what legally are we supposed to do or should do? Um, my first take on it would be to make sure it's advertised out there and w- we get hopefully multiple offers on this thing or these, these properties. So uh, the way that your motion is written, you're not asking us truly to pick one.
Yeah, I think number one is the notice of intent to sell surplus property, which is option number one
Yep.
in my memo. Um, which is the easiest, well, it's not the easiest route because technically the council can do what they want. You really, from what I read, um, and all the documents and, and items that I've reviewed, you don't have to advertise it. You could probably just sell it. Um, but my recommendation is, is that you advertise it at least once or as recommended at twice and put the signs on it and then wait about thirty to sixty days and, and, um, look what you got and then we'll review them. I, in that time, in that time period, I'm gonna have to finalize the CSMs and, and get appraisals on the property. Cause the one thing I'm positive of is we have to have current appraisals when we sell the property.
When we sold the old municipal building, we put out RFPs. Uh, we wanted to see what different people wanted to do to develop that part, property. Uh, maybe we would wanna go that route so that uh, there might be competing proposals on what to do with that property. I think we would wanna get the highest and best use for it. Um, have you given some thought to that?
I did. But i- if you remember properly, there was, there was a real tight scope of what they wanted to have done to the old municipal building. They didn't want it torn down. They wanted it to maintain its historical features. And they wanted it to have a, a use consistent with the rest of the downtown. This one is zoned, um, multifamily. Um, we had proposals for, um, condominiums or apartments. Um, the use is kinda limited by the zoning that we've got proposed. Site plan approval is pretty tight on this. The buildings are already removed. There's no historic features. Um, so I, I figured the least amount of control that we exercise over it. Um, and the faster we get it into the mark, uh, into the redevelopment, the better it is for us. So those are my logic behind why I went the way I did on the recommendation. I just don't see any need to control the site as much as we did in the, in the old municipal building.
Is there an opportunity for commercial development on that site?
Uh, it, it could be, but we'd have to rezone it. Uh, the one eleven seventeen is commercial. Uh, now I'm talking terminal four. But, um, again, that's pretty tightly controlled by site plan. And because there's no existing building on it, there would be no looking at redeveloping an existing building, which is normally what you do with an RFP. Uh, and we were pretty broad in our commercial. It's not like we were, you know, one time we looked at doing tid number three as an RFP and what we were specifically looking for was, uh, senior housing. And we wanted senior housing proposals. Um, in this case, the only reason we go out would be is, let's say we were looking for uh, a very specific type of, uh, sporting goods store. And we were advertising for, um, some type of sporting goods store. And we wanted to have proposals on what type of sporting goods they could put in there. We, we could do that. Uh, but that was, I, I mean, at this point in time, you know, you're looking at a pretty broad spectrum of commercial uses that, that would work down there. That would probably be bringing in a higher and better use. The other thing is if they only buy eleven seventeen, that site isn't really big enough for a, a, a large retail site. We would have to have it, they would also have to buy the next lot over to the west, which we do own and is available. Um, and if they were looking at anything significant, they probably need the next lot too. Um, so from this standpoint, I was looking at and saying if, you know, if they're looking at it and they, and they have a decent proposal and they understand what they're buying with the lot, um, I don't know that we need to exercise that much control on it, but it's up to you guys.
I would prefer prefer to stay away from having that committee that you proposed and have it be in the hands of the council to make the, the decision on whatever you get. Um, maybe we can still fashion a way to have somewhat of a closed session to discuss any proposals you get. Um, I spoke with Dan about it today and maybe he could elaborate further about how that might happen, but I would prefer not to put an extra layer of a committee in between you and us in making that decision.
Yeah, Vicki, if you remember, all RFPs have a review committee that then makes a recommendation to the city council. Um, I have no attach, like I said before, I have no attachment to an extra committee if I don't need to. Um, cause that just, that just, I have to go through and create a matrix and go through and develop all the questions and then we have to sit down and score them all. And, and the council could make it a much easier proposition. So yeah, I'm, I'm not attached to that one at all. Especially if we go with this option because then it's, it's pretty much just the price. There's no review of what their proposals are.
Yeah, and that makes it a little bit easier all the way around. Cause if we get into a closed session and we're talking uh, about uses on that property, I'm not sure that's the right thing to do for transparency.
I, I don't know that that worries me. We, um, eventually it'll have to come out into the public and be voted on before we do anything with it. Um, I just, at this point in time, the zoning controls it enough that w- it gives us a broad spectrum of opportunities. Um, and it gives us a better opportunity to move the property and have someone invest in it.
Yeah.
Relatively quickly. If we, if we put too much control on it, there, there are some advantages to that. We get what we want. Um, but on the other hand, um, the market can drive it and, and, um, probably generate as good a product as we would develop through an RFP process.
Sure. Okay.
I agree.
I, I just wanna mention that I do think we have somewhat of a charge prior to bringing the best use to those properties as we can to improve the south end of town. So I don't wanna go down that exactly, but I, I would hope we would do that.
I, I think that we should not, well, anything that we do is gonna be an improvement over what was there. Um, but I think that through the controls that we have through site plan and zoning, it will do, it'll come along pretty well. Um, obviously, we need to do some additional cleanup in the area. Um, lot twelve oh four is ne- will need some work to be able to make it fully usable in a fashion that's consistent with city site plan. Um, site eleven seventeen is a little tight, especially as we take the right way off the si- south side, but down north and where the north property line is, it's probably not gonna be that big of a deal, but still, we need to be able to review those issues and, and make some determinations and, and work with the people as they look at it. Uh, but I think, um, you know how our site plan goes. It's, it's a pretty complex process. I know people think that we just put up the buildings that we wanna put up, but that, that's not the way it works.
Right.
And I agree with the people who have said we wanna be as transparent as we can. Um, I had people ask me when this first came up, some people stopped me and said, I heard that you're going to be buying some property from the city and blah, 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 blah. Well, anyway, the point being is there is interest and not always because they wanna buy it, but because they do want it transparent. So I think we have to bend over backwards to be transparent.
Yeah. Okay. Does anybody else have any other comments or questions that they wanna ask?
Um, my only question is for Mrs. Schmidt, Ms. Schmidt. Uh, were you going to motion to amend that, to remove the committee aspect?
Yes, I, I would like to, uh, uh, move that we remove that part of the motion, um, about the committee to, uh, to strike that.
So we'll return to council for review?
Yes.
I second that.
Okay. So let's have a roll call vote on removing number two from the current motion that has an amendment?
Mr. Fields?
Aye.
Diane?
Aye.
Mr. Foster?
Aye.
Mr. Fritsch?
Aye.
Ms. Schmidt?
Aye.
Motion passed by zero.
Perfect. That's what I was gonna do right after. No, that's okay. Okay, so we have it now amended, so there's only a number one in there that we will notice of intent. The notice of intent to sell surplus real estate will be advertised. And number two is stricken from that. Is there any other comments? Hearing none, let's call the vote on the motion as amended.
Diane?
Aye.
Mr. Foster?
Aye.
Mr. Fritsch?
Aye.
Ms. Schmidt?
Aye.
Mr. Fields?
Aye.
Motion passed by zero.
All right, thank you. Uh, that moves us on to nine E, which is Resolution Twenty dash twenty-two, a conditional use request that has gone through the through this, uh, plan commission. Could you read that title for us, please?
City Council Resolution Twenty dash twenty-two, Conditional Use Permit Declarations and Findings, Rob and Kim Campbell, Dog and Shrub Distillery, One Forty-five Industrial Drive.
I'll make a motion to approve Resolution Twenty twenty-two.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Second? That was Doug. Okay. So there was some conversation about this in the plan commission, um, last week. And it's a large property and the way the stuff was written at first there, uh, they were asking for access to have alcoholic beverages anywhere on the property. And going through this, some conditions were set on this for certain areas. So having a permit where they have some games, um, beer garden game area and that the petitioner will comply with all, uh, the city ordinances when holding outside events. So what they're asking for is basically on a day-to-day weekly basis to be able to serve, uh, alcoholic beverages or liquor out in their certain areas on their property. And anything else that would be considered an event, they would be required to get a full event, um, permit to hold a full event there to have alcohol or a larger event on their property. They're also looking at some tours and things like that. So these are items that are chaperoned. That's the word I was looking for. So they're chaperoned by the owners. They're showing them the process, the different stuff that's growing and how they, um, what, what goes into making the different alcohol. So that is really what this comes down to. And we talked at length with the petitioner and they understood what the, what we were asking them to do. And the plan commission approved it to move forward here to the city council to approve this for them. Was there anything else that I'm missing, Mr. Drescher?
No.
I think, uh, the only thing that was really missing is that the petitioners were going to supply information with regard to where these uses were. They did supply a map um, that indicates specific zones, zone one being the beer garden, um, the, the patio area, zone two being that game area that you discussed and zone three being the, um, tour area. Um, I think that that information is going to be more final, finalized, um, and they'll provide a document that is a good representation that will incorporate into uh, this resolution in the future. Um, I think that there was one other item and that was that they were gonna use landscaping to designate the zones so that they would have some type of control over the area so that we didn't have people moving in, you know? When they're on the tour, someone's always there. But when they're out playing games, um, there's the opportunity to have, um, activities that might not be legal, such as eighteen and nineteen-year-olds or younger, um, participating in the games and also participating in some of the other activities. Um, so, uh, we tried to make sure that that was included and I think, Mark, do you have any comments you wanna make?
No, I think you, Steve and Dan just hit on that, the short-term fix is really a markup of what they want to do, so that we all understand it, and the long-term fix is a landscape plan, which is a requirement anyway. So.
All right.
Thanks, Mark.
I have a question.
Go ahead.
How does what they're asking for compare to what we currently offer, like at Tyranina Brewery, and, you know, do they have those same kind of choices, could they if they wanted to? I don't really get it, I don't have a good sense of the big picture here, but I'm wondering, is it apples and apples, or are we, you know?
The differences are, this is a distillery, Tyranina's a brewery, so we made, the planner in our code previously made a designation beer garden, we're applying that from brewery to distillery, it's outdoor service of alcohol. The other difference between Tyranina and this property specifically is the zoning designation, I believe, or actually, that's not accurate, they are zone similar, the exact same, the difference is basically management of the space, when the Campbells' application came in, they have a multiple acre property that they were looking at designating the entire area, which is designated as their premises under their distiller code, or other, under their permit, so this is really just an effort to control and kind of limit where that property is accessible with alcohol. Really, the two entities are being treated very, very similar, because the zoning classification is the same.
The zoning
The difference would be like Sunshine Brewing Downtown that has a different zoning designation, they still have a beer patio and outdoor use, but it's managed in a different manner.
I just wanted to make sure that you're treating everybody equally and fairly.
Yeah, and it's really the size and shape and the use of the property is one of the things that we had to take into consideration there, with the Tyranina, they do have the trees there as boundaries, and they're able to actually watch the customers a lot easier than they would on a two to three acre property.
I believe the petitioners, the Campbells, would say that they've used Tyranina as a model in this circumstance, at least to some extent, they have a lot of ground to work with, and it sounds like it's going to be a pretty comprehensive facility, they're going to have a lot of offerings.
Thank you.
All right, is there any other discussion on this? All right, seeing none, hearing none, let's call the roll call vote, please.
Mr. Foster?
Aye.
Mr. Fritsch?
Aye.
Ms. Schmidt?
Aye.
Mr. Fields?
Aye.
Diane?
Aye.
Motion passed five zero.
All right, thank you. All right, that brings us up to item nine F, ordinance 1213. Good, well, I think we have to read that whole thing, don't we, on the third reading?
Just the title for a third reading.
All right, let's go ahead and read that title.
Ordinance 1213, amending Chapter 249, Alcohol Beverages, Article One, Licenses and Permits, Section 249-1, State Statutes Adopted, and Section 249-2, Licensing Provisions.
Okay, I will accept a motion on this.
I'll make a motion.
To adopt it?
Second.
I don't know.
You're going to make the motion to adopt it, Diane?
Yeah.
Okay. All right, so Steve, then you seconded it, correct?
Correct.
Okay. Yep, go ahead.
Before the meeting, I asked Dan, and he said that with this pass, the applicants, if they were tricked down, still have the ability to request a chance to speak to the council. Am I, did I characterize that accurately?
That's accurate, but I don't, with this, my intent would be that if there was anything in question, I'd be bringing it to you guys to make the decision whether or not to grant or deny, and then if you were to deny it, then they could petition you to reconsider, and that's how it currently is as well.
That's what I, that's what I brought about, because I know at least one time that when we looked into something closer, we found that the person had already done some things to remedy the problem, the license, and when we found that out, we did give you license, but we couldn't see that on the application, so I just wanted to make sure that if somebody found that there was a problem, they still have that
Course of action?
Course of action to go, right.
Okay. Okay. Did everybody get that, is there any questions on that? Or do you have any questions on the ordinance at all, or would like to make any other comments on the ordinance? All right, here in the bells chime, let's call a roll.
Mr. Fritsch?
Aye.
Ms. Schmidt?
Aye.
Mr. Fields?
Aye.
Diane?
Aye.
Mr. Foster?
Aye.
Motion passed five zero.
All right, that brings us to recommendations for future agendas, does anybody have anything that we know about right now, I know Steve brought up a couple of things already. Anybody else have anything that they want to bring up, I know that we still can't get into any of our other sessions yet for branding or anything like that, so that's off the table for now. Steve, do you have anything?
No, I don't have anything additional, I know that we'll look at the approving the grant documents from Sports Fish and Wildlife, and the recreational boating grant. Misty, there was a, there were a couple of other small items we had, too, weren't there?
The food truck RFP.
Yep, and as well as the liquor license application that kind of goes with that, and I believe that there's also a developer's agreement.
I just have a question for Dan. Are we in having or doing our city manager review?
I'm waiting for closed sessions, I have a lot of business to discuss in closed session, what I thought about because of the nature of this year, maybe we do a semi-annual review and then the annual review.
That's what I was thinking as well. I think things have come and gone so quickly.
I was prepared for it, you provided me the schedule, I was prepared for it, but no closed sessions, and that's at the pleasure of the council, when are you willing to go into a closed session at this point? Are we willing to do closed session meetings over a platform like eight by eight? I don't know about confidentiality in that circumstance, I have concerns, so I'd like to get everybody in a room at some point, soon.
Yeah, and I would rather do it face to face and not over something like this technology.
I think two this year is five, evaluation, I'm questioning that follows, do we need to figure out if we do a closed session, could we finish business at that?
I was basically going to wait until May was over, but yes, it's coming, it's necessary.
From what's coming through on the news even today, it sounds like June, July doesn't sound any better than May, so maybe we wanted to do something in here, and we're just spaced away from each other, and something like that.
It's definitely time to start discussing it, it's necessary.
All right, thanks, Diane. Anybody else? Going once, twice, three times, we are adjourned.